The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good evening. I'd like to ask everyone to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Farmington Town Council meeting. And first on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Paula.
The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 12, 2019, at 7:05 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Manager's 2019-2020 Recommended Budget, dated in Farmington, Connecticut, this 25th day of February 2019, Kathy Egan, Town Manager.
And we will first have a presentation from Kathy Egan, our Town Manager, and then Kathy Greeter, our Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening. Farmington Town Council and members of the public. I present for your review the Town Manager's Recommended Budget for fiscal year 1920. The general fund budget includes the recommended spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The recommended budgets for Westwood's Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The Town Council set a target in which the town expenditure portion of the budget would increase no more than 2% to 2.5% above the current expenditures. Along with the Town Council's budget target, the town's strategic plan, and the town's capital improvement policy were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating this budget. This budget building process focused on the following two funding themes. Maintain current service levels. This budget continues to fund accounts at levels that will enable the service level to remain at a high standard. Maintain current capital funding. The cost of maintaining the town's infrastructure through the capital budget is a necessary expense that has to be recognized. The cost of not maintaining the town's property, buildings, and equipment will have a significant negative long-term impact. This year's appropriation meets our capital improvement policy guidelines. I will now review the expenditure portion of the town budget in detail. General Administration. The general administration group of accounts includes expenses for the administrative branch of the town government and funding for nonprofit organizations that the town supports. Some areas to note, the salary reserve account in the personnel budget will cover salary adjustments for non-union staff and members of IAAF and IBPO, salary adjustments for SEIU and ASME, as well as contractual step increases our budget in the respective department accounts this year. The contribution to the library is $2,603,023, which is 2.50% increase above the current budget levels. The proposed budget request for this group of accounts is $6,759,997, or a 1.09% increase above the current budget. Public Safety. The Public Safety group of accounts includes fire, police, emergency medical, and ambulance services, dispatching, and building inspection functions. Some areas to note, the fire hydrant fees are projected to increase by $22,458, or 2.4% for the upcoming fiscal year. The Police Fleet account includes funding for three new 24-hour patrol vehicles and a lease payment for one new unmarked vehicle. This account also funds lease payments for previously purchased unmarked vehicles. This is in line with our police vehicle replacement plan. The proposed budget request for this group of accounts is $10,63,815, or a 2.07% increase above the current budget. Public Works. The Public Works group of accounts includes Public Works Development, Highway and Grounds, and Engineering. Some areas to note, the Highway and Grounds operation account shows funding for four summer seasonal employees who will be used to supplement regular staff. The Highway and Grounds Traffic Control account shows a decrease in the electricity line due to the conversion of streetlights to LED lamps. The purchase of streetlights and relamping program has led to significant savings. The proposed budget request for the Public Works group of accounts is $4,836,086, an increase of 1.64% above the current budget. Community and Recreational Services. The Community and Recreational Services group of accounts includes community service and housing. Some areas to note, the Elderly Service account funds administration for the Meals on Wheels program, as well as other needs for eligible residents that are not met by state relief programs. The Relief Payment account is used to provide assistance to eligible town residents. This account is supplemented by fundraising efforts. Overall, this budget has increased due to salary adjustments for SEIU and ASME employees, as well as increased funding levels for the Dial-A-Ride program. The total request for the Community and Recreational Services account is $882,421, an increase of 5.18% above the current budget. Other. The Other group of accounts includes funds for employee benefits and contingencies. Some areas to note, the pension contribution has been increased as a result of an increase in the accrued liability for non-active participants and Board of Education non-certified staff. The account also funds required contributions to the defined contribution plan. Workers' compensation shows a reduction due to favorable rates. Health insurance is increasing due to projected premium increases for stop-loss insurance. The Recommended Budget request for this group of accounts is $7,769,335, an increase of I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supply, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases for each object are as follows. The Salary account has increased by 1.88%. The Benefits account has increased by 5.51%. The Supplies account has increased by 0.67%. The Equipment account has increased by 1.88%. And Contractual has increased by 2.78%. And Utilities has decreased by 3.7%. The Recommended Total General Fund Appropriation is $30,311,654, which is a 2.50% increase above the current budget. This recommended budget increase of 2.50% maintains the service levels that residents expect. Debt Service. The Debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term bonded debt. The total recommended amount for next fiscal year is $9,298,362. This is an increase of $899,351, or 10.71% from the previous year. This increase in debt service is a result of a full 12-month payment to the State Clean Water Fund, a loan obligation for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, as well as the second Clean Water Fund loan obligation that the town expects to enter during the fall of The Refuge Collection Budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid and bulky waste generated by our town residents, our regional household hazard waste program, and the town's landfill operation. This budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will remain at $235 per household. The Proposed General Fund Appropriation to Support the Capital Improvement is $3,833,000. This is an increase of 52.16% from last year's funding level. The Town's Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, and the Town Strategic Plan were the policy guidelines that were at the forefront when formulating the CIP while focusing the appropriations into two main funding themes. These themes are equipment, infrastructure maintenance improvements, and technology and communication initiatives. The Proposed General Fund Appropriation to Support the First Year of the Capital Improvement Plan is $3,833,000, which equals a 3.42% of the recommended general fund revenues for next year. Based on the town's capital improvement policy, the town's objective is to contribute at least 2.5% of annual general fund revenues allocated to the operating budget. I've included the complete Board of Education and Town Request as presented at the February 26, 2019 Town Council meeting in the budget document. At that meeting, the Town Council acknowledged that there are significant capital needs for the entire community. Bonding. The first year of the capital plan proposes three bond questions with proposed bonding totaling $5,170,000. $1,670 to the Board of Education for the East Farms office relocation, $2 million to the Engineering Department for road reconstruction, and $1.5 million for one fire apparatus, the replacement of ladder one at Farmington Fire Station. Parsons Property. I've included in the proposed capital budget an appropriation from the general fund balance in the amount of $700,000 for the acquisition of the Parsons property. The fund balance has grown significantly over the past few years, and now totals $14,428,990, or 13.6% of fiscal year 18-19 operating budget. The proposed appropriation of $700,000 would leave the fund balance at $13.7 million, or 12.9% of the fiscal year 18-19 operating budget. Teacher's Retirement Plan. This fiscal year, we are faced with new and costly mandates from the state of Connecticut as the governor and the legislature work to shape the state's fiscal environment. Partial funding of the Teacher's Retirement Plan is just one of the many mandates that the town may face this year. This budget includes $256,006 for the town's portion of the Teacher's Retirement Plan. The Board of Education account includes a request of $67,785,605, an increase of 3.02% above the current year's budget. I'll now call on Kathy Greeter to present the Board of Education's budget, and then I'll be back to do the revenue part.
I'm pleased to present the Board of Education's Recommended 2019-2020 School Year Budget to the Town Council and Farmington community. 2019-2020 School District Budget was developed to address the Board of Education's mission and improvement design within the budget guidelines, policies of the Board, and state and federal requirements. It's important to note that throughout the budget development process, zero-based budgeting was implemented. Farmington's mission is outlined on this slide. Our mission directly aligns to our improvement design, creating a through-line from our mission and strategic improvement priorities to all classrooms, all schools, and all students. This visual represents our strategic improvement design. It serves as the foundation of our budget development, and I'll just go over it really quickly for everyone. The "What" is our vision of the graduate, which was developed in Farmington after a community engagement process in 2010. Farmington led the way back in 2010, as school districts across Connecticut are just now developing their own vision of the graduate. The "How," our framework for teaching and learning, is our instructional delivery model. It aligns to research on how students learn best, and it was developed to enact our vision of the graduate. The "Why," our core beliefs, outline how we interact with one another and how we approach our work with students each day. And the "Direction," our theory of action, is a series of if/then statements that provide a clear direction for the next level of work for all members of our school district when it comes to our student-centered approach to teaching and learning. Farmington's vision of the graduate outlines a core body of knowledge and the transferable thinking and learning skills all Farmington students are required to master upon graduation. Improvement efforts including curriculum, instruction, assessments, and programming are aligned to our vision of the graduate, beginning in kindergarten and throughout all grade levels. As a result, Farmington remains at the forefront of innovation in teaching, learning, student outcomes, and students as leaders of their own learning at the local, state, and national levels. This slide shows students actively engaged in purpose-driven, self-directed, mastery-based, and socially constructed learning experience aligned to our vision of the graduate. The Board of Education's Recommended Budget reflects a total budget amount of $67,685,605, with an increase of $1,985,707, or a 3.02% increase over the 2018-2019 School District This is a different view of the 3.02% increase. 1.18% of the 3.02% increase reflects collaborative employee board negotiations with all associations in the area of salaries. 1.29% of the 3.02% increase reflects health insurance claim trends that necessitate a large increase in health insurance funding for the coming budget year. 0.4% of the 3.02% increase reflects the renewal of our transportation contract, including GPS and video surveillance for safety and security purposes, as well as special services transportation. 0.14% of the 3.02% increase reflects other services, supplies, equipment, and fees, including required increase in special services based on student need. The Recommended Budget maintains core programming K-12 aligned to Farmington's improvement design and strategic priorities by advancing academic excellence and equity through innovative programming K-12, supporting students, academic and social-emotional development, providing flexible pathways for challenge and support, promoting comprehensive research-based and highly effective staff and faculty development, increasing safety and security measures in our schools and in the area of transportation, containing costs through zero-based budgeting and efficiencies to maintain current programming, and maintaining class-size levels in accordance with Board of Ed policy. This slide highlights the impressive results we continue to achieve, given our strong alignment from our improvement design to our financial plan, our annual budget. Farmington continues to be highlighted at the regional, state, and national levels for excellence in teaching and learning and student outcomes. I'll highlight a few notable accomplishments on this slide. Farmington sophomores once again outperformed the national cohort of seniors on the college work readiness assessment. This assessment aligns directly to our vision of the graduate, and our students' impressive outcomes are a reflection of the boards and our community's commitment to all students acquiring not only a core body of knowledge, but the transferable thinking and learning skills most valued in college work and life. Students and faculty continue to be recognized at the state and national levels for their many varied accomplishments. For example, the IAR Science Bowl team finished first and attended the National Bowl in Washington, D.C. Other impressive recognitions and accomplishments, our FHS was in first place in the Entrepreneurship Challenge. Our economics team earned first place in the annual Harvard Pre-Collegiate Economics Challenge. The Voice, FHS Student Newspaper recently was awarded a gold medal for excellence in student media. FHS Theater Productions received 12 Halo Award nominations and one in the category of Best Dynamic Duo in a Play. These are just a few of the notable highlights on this slide. Please refer to our Achievements PowerPoint and our Results and Outcomes booklet online for more detailed accomplishments. Through the community's investment, and our schools, Farmington schools, and students continue to lead the way. Here are examples of our favorable state rankings when it comes to expenditures. There is a relationship between the previous accomplishment slide and the ranking slide, excellence in education and programming, as well as fiscal responsibility and management. The rankings are based on Connecticut's 169 towns, with one spending the most, and 169 spending the least. The next few slides will provide several examples of how the school district has focused on strategic cost allocation and high-quality educational programming. I'll highlight two items from this slide to illustrate our strategic approach. We reevaluated the needs for virtualization, resulting in the adoption of new services that allowed reallocation of funding by approximately $25,000 in the operating budget and $50,000 in the capital budget. Continuous improvement of our network topology and collaboration with CEN has leveraged a federal e-rate program, resulting in increased network security, increased bandwidth, and added resiliency. Given our extraordinary outcomes coupled with our favorable expenditure ratings, rankings, here are additional examples of how we focus each day on cost containment to arrive at this year's budget level. I'll highlight two items on this slide. An update in security cameras, K-12, will result in annual savings to the operating budget next year and in the future. Farmington Public Schools was successfully awarded a security grant to support security-related improvements for an estimated $300,644 in grant funding. We have made a strong commitment to safety and security in the Farmington schools. Here are some additional examples of cost containment measures, and I'll highlight two examples on this slide. A new occupational therapy equipment collaborative between several school districts is resulting in cost savings for Farmington. It is also important to note that we do collaborate with an ERC on special education programs that are off-site. One is the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center, and we also share a program for 18- to 21-year-olds with Simsbury at the University of Hartford. We share nursing services also with Simsbury. All of these practices reflect excellence in programming for our students and significant and sustained cost savings for Farmington. We hear a lot about regionalization or shared efforts. Farmington has a long history of regional partnerships with other school districts and shared efforts with the Town of Farmington that have benefited the Farmington community greatly. New internal and external lighting projects, which included a partnership with the Town of Farmington and grant funding, will continue to provide savings in electricity over time. It's also important to note that this budget has experienced close to a percentage decrease during the budget development and approval process, with reductions to the budget totaling over $500,000 to arrive at the Board of Education's Recommended Budget. This once again reflects our commitment to zero-based, needs-based budgeting aligned to our innovative improvement design. The first driver of the budget is salaries, and as you can see, this accounts for 66.82% of the total budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations and the Board of Education. Each of the association's negotiated salary increases are listed on this slide. The Salary Series reflects a 1.75% increase over this year's budget. The second major driver is employee benefits. This account provides for 100% of expected pay claims and the administration of employee health insurance. Farmington's preventative care measurements show best-in-class rates across almost all items. You can see the life and long-term disability cost on this slide as well. In the last few months, we have experienced higher claim costs. Given a trend in higher claim costs, there is a larger increase than in recent years in this account. The Employee Benefits Series accounts for 15.67% of our total budget. There is an 8.69% increase in this account. Health insurance trends are trending at 10% to 12%. Even with this increase, we are below health insurance current cost trend. The Services Series includes varied items. The Series accounts for 13.83% of the total budget, reflects a 3.91% increase. This is an area of cost avoidance and containment through contract negotiations. It also reflects a commitment to providing excellent programming for students requiring special services. The increase in this series is across several objects. Two examples of increases in the Services Series are in transportation due to our newly negotiated contract and special services based on student need. The 300 Series also includes major facility projects within the operating budget. First, I want to highlight the need to address our significant and critical facility issues in our FHS facility. We have included the recently approved FHS Statement of Need in the Board's capital budget and in our budget book, as this is an urgent and critical facility need in Farmington, and we hope to continue our work in collaboration with the town and our community to address the FHS Statement of Need in a timely manner. In addition, we're continuing to implement the recommendations of our comprehensive K-8 2018 Facility Assessment. We now have both short and long-term facility recommendations for our school facilities. The information in each of the K-8 Facility Assessment reports inform both our annual capital budget, as well as our annual major facility projects in the Services Series of our operating budget. In Farmington, our mission and improvement design have been and continue to be clear, compelling, and reflect our tradition of leading the way in education. Now we have clear and comprehensive plan to improve and align our facilities to our mission and improvement design. The Supply Series reflects a 0.53% decrease, or a $10,003 decrease. The 400 Series accounts for 2.75% of the total budget. The account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions and for the purchase of a wide range of items such as instructional health, custodial, computer, and testing supplies. The next slide reflects the budget level for the Equipment Series, which accounts for 0.59% of the total budget. The Series reflects equipment requests. There's a slight 2.36%, or $9,202, increase for equipment. The Dues and Fees Series is the last series. It reflects 0.35% of the total budget with a 2.87% or $6,382 increase. This includes memberships to organizations and liability and property insurance, and the increase in this series is attributed to contractual increase in liability insurance. The next slide is an overview of the major budget drivers that reflect a 3.02% increase over the 2018-19 School District Budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. The 2019-2020 Budget supports all students to achieve academic and personal excellence, exhibit persistent effort, and live as resourceful, inquiring, and contributing global citizens. Farmington continues to lead the way in excellence in teaching and learning, as well as in student outcomes, achievements, and in the area of operations. Our financial plan supports and advances these efforts. We have taken a long-term, strategic, and highly effective approach to cost containment, avoidance, and savings, so that resources are aligned directly to our mission and improvement design at the student level. We provide a student-centered, nurturing learning environment that is purpose-driven, self-directed, and mastery-based with a commitment to socially constructed learning. We take great pride in implementing a strategic approach to improvement with an eye on cost containment through collaborative negotiations, partnerships, ongoing reviews of programming, facilities, and staffing to realize efficiencies, knowing that it is essential to do so on behalf of our students and the taxpayers of Farmington, especially with uncertain financial support from grants and state-level funding. This is a collaborative endeavor with all members of our school district community, seeking out new and innovative approaches that will contain or reduce costs over time while ensuring excellence in all that we do. The clarity in our improvement design greatly assists in systems alignment, including resource allocation and implementation of strategic improvement priorities that enhance student outcomes enacted by all members of the school district community. Our student, faculty, school, and district accomplishments, continuous improvement efforts, rigorous curriculum, and high-quality programming have contributed to a nationally recognized education here in Farmington. The Recommended 2019-2020 Budget is responsive to our community and to our students, the next generation of pioneers, scholars, contributors, and citizens. We look forward to presenting this budget in more detail to the Town Council and community. Board Chair Chris Fagan will now come up to the podium to provide additional comments on behalf of the Board of Education's Recommended 2019-2020 Operating Budget.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow Town Council members, for the opportunity to come before you tonight, along with the Superintendent, present the Board of Education's 2019-2020 Budget. On behalf of the entire Farmington Board of Education, I would like you to know that the Recommended Budget as presented to you tonight and tomorrow represents the dedicated and collaborative efforts, and consider judgment of our Superintendent Kathy, her administrators, the district teachers, and my fellow board members, and I would just like to thank everyone for their efforts. As an innovative learning organization, the mission and vision of the Farmington School District is deeply committed to a pathway of continuous improvement. Our teaching and learning process is based on the collaborative interactions among students, educators, parents, and families, and emphasizes the importance of clear expectations, rigorous standards-led curriculum, inspired instruction, personal effort, and engaged relationships leading to high levels of achievement for all learners. We collectively, as a board and administration, are ultimately guided in our efforts by the fundamental principle we call the Vision of the Graduate, whereby Farmington graduates will acquire an understanding of the essential knowledge and skills in the core academic disciplines and develop the thinking and learning skills needed to meet the challenges of local, national, and global citizenship in a rapidly changing world. I hope that as Kathy went through her presentation, that the Town Council appreciates that Farmington continues to lead the way in terms of achieving unparalleled academic excellence, both locally and nationally, that our proposed budget allows us to maintain core programming aligned across all grade levels to achieve our strategic priorities, and our budget and collective collaborative leadership provide exceptional management of taxpayer dollars through highly effective cost containment measures and the effective allocation of available resources. But these are challenging times. Each of us knows that a day probably doesn't go by and we don't hold our breath and wait for the latest pronouncement from the state as to additional cuts in state funding and potential increased cost sharing at the municipal level. As a district, Farmington must face the continual challenges of in compliance with unfunded state mandates, potential grant reductions, and now the potential increased burden of teacher pension cost sharing. As we are all too aware, we are facing an ongoing crisis in our most important capital assets, too, namely our infrastructure. And I use the term "ours" as I do not mean the Board of Education or the administration And I use the term "ours" as I do not mean the Board of Education or the administration, but I mean the entire town of Farmington because our schools are community assets at the end of the day. And we are attacking these issues through our comprehensive K-38 facility studies, in addition to the recent ad hoc committees and dedication to reconvene a building committee for Farmington High School. I'd like to thank the Town Council for their efforts in this regard. So with that in mind, the Board of Education's capital and operating budgets are presented to you this year represent a fiscally responsible, short-term, and long-term plan that allows us to continue with our mission to provide a top-tier educational experience to our students in light of these challenges. And in adverse times such as these, we must commit to honor our pledge to the children and families of Farmington to continue adequately funding our educational system. Against that difficult backdrop, we undertook this budget process, knowing it would be a challenge to make any provision for substantial increases in expenditures on education, and you can rest assured that there are certainly items that both teachers and administrators would have wanted that never found their way into this budget. As you'll know from the details presented to you tonight and tomorrow evening, the board is recommending an increase of only 3.02% or approximately 1.9 million to bring the total proposed budget to $67,785,605 for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. And I think we can all reasonably agree that the austerity underlying the proposed budget is most certainly reflected in the fact that of the proposed 1.9 million dollars increase, just over 1.6 million of that increase is directly related to contractually obligated salaries and benefits. As such, approximately $350,000 or less than 1% of the recommended total budget is directly related to extending and building upon the value proposition of the educational experience in Farmington. It goes without saying that Farmington is one of the best and highest-performing school districts, not only in the state but in the nation, and our schools, administrators, faculty, and students are routinely recognized for their educational achievements. It is one of the very reasons, myself included, why each of us live in this community and are proud to call ourselves Farmington residents. I think you will find, as we go through the budget in detail with you and consider it as part of the overall town budget, that this recommended budget not only allows us to continue to achieve our expected high levels of excellence in challenging, difficult times, but also represents a considered thoughtful and fiscally responsible approach, given the space we are operating in today and the uncertainty of the future. I also thought at this time, as just some general comments, and this may be repetitive to some, but I would share with the Town Council some of the thoughts I shared with my fellow board members during our budget process over the last month or so. As a board, trust me when I say that we recognize that our budget does not exist in a vacuum. While the Board of Education component over the overall Town of Farmington budget may be by far the largest component, it is still part of an overall budget that we are cognizant and recognize that. We remember that the town as a whole, and you, our Town Council, are undertaking a similar task on your end to design not only to achieve the Board of Education goals, but achieve the goals for services and infrastructure needs for all stakeholders in the entire Farmington community. Every year, as we at the Board of Ed go through our process, there has been discussion of targets being presented to the Board of Education by the Town Council, but I think we should remember that these targets also come to us relatively late in the process, and Kathy has been going on to her budget for months before this comes up. However, please know that we, as board members, and despite some difference of opinion, appreciate this guidance overall. I think we, as board members, would be remiss if we sacrificed the fiduciary duties of financial responsibility and did not understand those targets as we go through this process. On the other hand, I believe we would be equally remiss in our fiduciary duties as board members if we abdicated our duty to our mission as Board of Education and somehow felt absolutely constrained by those targets as we planned for the next year and beyond in delivering on our educational proposition here in Farmington. In considering and approving the Board of Education budget that is placed before you now, I personally ask my fellow members to take any targets as a thoughtful, well-intended, well-considered, and studied guideposts to us as we consider our budget and the needs of the district as we continue to go through this process. Those targets are designed and intended to provide us with direction as we go through this process, so that we never forget that our budget must be considered holistically within the context of the town's entire budget and that we do operate within certain financial parameters. I also ask my fellow board members to not view the Town Council as an adversary in this process, but rather as a partner. And I would also ask simply that the Town Council, you view yourselves with the Board of Education in a similar light, as a partner and not an adversary. All I can say is I hope each of you, as I asked of my fellow board members, will utilize all the information available to you as you make your decisions, for only then is a decision fully informed. Again, I believe that the board should never be offended or somehow feel intruded upon to receive financial guidance from the Town Council, as I equally believe that we should not feel absolutely constrained in the fulfillment of our duties by that guidance. Strict and blind adherence to either of these positions would, in my opinion, be an abdication of our fiduciary duties. And like most things in life, the philosophical landing spot is likely somewhere in between. We should not cut budgets to cut budgets. We should not equally spend money to spend money. We should not approach this budget process with a sense of distrust, nor should we blindly approve without scrutiny whatever comes before us. In the end, all of us must make informed collaborative decisions based on all the information at our disposal and how that information can help us achieve all our goals for both the Board of Education and the town. That said, I truly believe that the board's budget as presented to you is an exercise in collaboration, transparency, dedication, and commitment by the superintendent and the entire administration, and I thank them for their time and efforts in preparing and presenting this to the board and now the Town Council. And we, as a board, have reviewed this budget like all zero-based budgets the superintendent has put forth in the past, and there have sometimes been heated debates at the board's table and reductions made in past years, and there may be more reductions borne by necessity this year. However, I can undoubtedly say that this year, as in the past years, the superintendent's budget, as reflective of the cumulative efforts of administrators, comes to the board in the first instance as presumptively reasonable, albeit always subject to the board's and now Town Council's further required and disciplined review. And again, I truly believe that Kathy and her entire administrative staff, through their continued dedication to the community, its students, and its families have earned the right to that presumption. The superintendent has put forth, and the board has approved, the budget with an increase of 3.02%. I believe that we went through our deliberate consideration of this budget, the financial austerity behind the proposed budget became self-evident. Setting aside contractually negotiated salaries and benefits, other costs like increasing special needs support, the renegotiated bus contract, and never-ending infrastructure needs, there's not much that, if cut out, would not have a direct and significant impact on programmatic deliverables. The board's budget as approved and placed before you now may not be in the Town Council's targets that we discussed, but that, in my mind, does not make it unreasonable on its face and not worthy of support. And I sincerely believe that this budget allows the administration and the board to continue to deliver on its educational mission and proposition in a fiscally responsible matter. I have purposely asked Kathy to leave this slide up behind me during my comments, and every year when I go through this process, I marvel at our district's ability to achieve unparalleled academic success while also running a fiscally and financially responsible district. When you look at this chart, I mean, the one takeaway is, I don't know how we continue to achieve what we do, given the financial management we run the district with. We do not strive to be number one on this chart, nor do we strive to be number 169. If so, for either one of those, we'd likely either be failing the town as a whole or our students and their families. And I think when you look at that and see where we rank and what we achieve, it really is a shining star in our management of the district. As part of the renewed Farmington High School building process, one resident mentioned in his comments that Farmington has a great reputation for low taxes, great town services, and great schools, but he also forewarned that if we are not careful, we will be placed in a position where all we're known for is low taxes. As I tell my children, when it comes to one's reputation, it can take 20 years or more to build it and just minutes to ruin it. So let us together, as the Town Council and Board of Education, continue to build upon the great reputation and legacy that Farmington has so richly deserved and in a manner that meets the needs of this wonderful community, both today, tomorrow, and for the future. So thank you for your consideration of this budget, and we look forward to meeting you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Okay, and I guess Kathy?
Kathy's gonna come back. (laughing). Is that the wrong slide? I don't think that's the beginning of it. Here's a summary of the budgetary expenditures. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 1920 is $112,184,627, an increase of $5,893,65, or 5.54% above the current budget. As we stated earlier, the Board of Education is a 3.02% increase, the Town Operations is a 2.5% increase, debt service is a 10.71% increase, capital outlay is a 52.16% increase, the Parsons is $700,000, which I mentioned earlier, and then the teachers' retirement at $256,006. The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a 0.22% increase, the personal property account shows a 1.93% increase, and the motor vehicle account shows a 1.05% increase. In summary, the grand list increased by 0.38% or $13,996,861 for a total grand list Some areas to note: the real estate grew by 0.22%, while small growth in this area shows a stable economy in Farmington. Personal property increased by 1.93%. This increase demonstrates the solid business environment in Farmington. Motor vehicles increased by 1.05%. Overall, we've seen an increase in the total value of cars in Farmington. This is primarily due to the newer model cars on the list. Revenues. Revenues have been broken down into categories that include other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charge, other, and Westwood's golf course contribution. In summary, the projected non-tax revenues are $9,721,827 or a 21.12% increase over the current year. Some areas to note: license and permits and fines and penalties are budgeted at slightly lower levels than last year. These figures are based on what we've been collecting over the last three years. Interest income is projected to increase 56.72% or $190,000. Interest rates have risen significantly over the past six months. State and federal grants have been increased by 19.4% overall. In recent years, due to the uncertainty of the state budget, we have been conservative in our budgeted grant revenue. We have based next year's projections on what we have actually received in the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year 1920. Service charges are projected to increase $66,235,000 or 5.04%. The Westwood's contribution includes a $335,025 contribution from Westwood's golf course operations to the operating budget to help support the golf course maintenance expenses. And you'll see there in fund balance, as discussed, I'm recommending $700,000 to be taken out of the fund balance for the acquisition of the Parsons property. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 28.22 mills, an increase of 1.04 mills or 3.82%. This illustrates that the average residential assessment will see an increase of $235.71 in their taxes. And you can look at this in another way. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,822 in taxes. The recommended 2019-20 budget meets the Town Council expenditure target. The budget maintains the service levels that the Farmington residents and businesses have come to expect without any real expansion of services. The budget supports the management of programs and services that are in accordance with industry best practices and adheres to our strategic plan and our strong financial policies such as the town's capital improvement plan and our debt management policy. This budget is essentially a maintenance budget. There is little or no expansion of services proposed in this budget. However, the proposed capital improvement plan is significantly increased. The town and the Board of Education capital improvement needs continue to grow. My staff and I stand ready to assist you in your deliberations throughout the week, and shown here is the 2019 budget schedule, which I'll just briefly go through for the camera, is that tomorrow, we're going to be meeting with the Board of Education at 4 o'clock. Then on Thursday, we're going to have my office at my department's come in, starting at 4 o'clock. Then on Saturday, we're going to start at 9 o'clock here in the council chambers, and we're going to go over debt service revenues and try to wrap up. If we don't wrap up on Saturday, we're going to go again on Monday and Tuesday between 4 and 9 o'clock. Then our next meeting after that will be April 1st, and that is going to be our regular Town Council meeting, and we're also going to have the public hearing on the Town Council's proposed budget. After that, April 15th will be the annual Town Meeting at the High School Auditorium. April 25th is our referendum vote. April 26th is a special Town Council meeting, if needed, if the referendum does not pass. Monday, April 29th, will be a second Town Meeting, if needed, and Thursday, May 9th, would be a second referendum vote, if needed. And then May 21st is going to be when we set the tax rate at our regular council meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Kathy and Chris. At this time, I would ask for any public comment. This is a public hearing. Please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak. So please join us.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Hutt Fagner. I live at Ford Deepwood Road. I'm here tonight to support the proposed school district budget. Our school system is one of the most valuable resources in town. The proposed budget provides the necessary resources for the school system to continue its current state of operation. Any reductions could impact the education of our kids. In comparison to other Connecticut towns, Farmington Schools ranks as one of the most cost-efficient systems in the state. This shows me that the Board of Education Administration are on top of their spending. If you dig into the details of the budget, there's certainly not much excess. Outside of the contractually obligated increases, there's not much going on. The one area I would like to point out that does have some small increases is special services. As a parent of a child who uses special services in town, there's no more important area of the school budget to protect. These are the most challenged and in-needs students in the district, and I believe any request from this area should be fully honored. Last point, and certainly while I'm biased because I have kids in the school system, I'm also grounded in reality. I understand everything costs money, and not all priorities or initiatives can be fully funded. While I'm not that dialed into the local dynamics of the town, I do realize there's always pressure on the budget, and if there are, I would urge everyone to try to not mess around with the town's most valuable resource, our school system. I think we should all work very hard to fully support the schools and make sure our kids get the quality education they deserve. It's one I'm willing to pay for, and I hope everyone else is as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, we've been presented with a new town budget that would raise taxes by almost 4%. And I think a majority of the Farmington community would like to see that be closer to 2%. A couple of important benchmarks to note. The inflation rate for the past 12 months is 1.8%. And last year, our mill rate increase was 1.9%, half of the proposed 3.82% today. I know that we've asked all the departments to work towards bringing their budget increases in under 2.5%. And I see the first department up for review on the agenda this week is the School Department. So the problem statement is, how do we help the school team get from over 3% to under 2.5% in their budget increase and without having a measurable impact on student learning? With so much of the school budget tied up in personnel costs, that's a logical first place to look. Right now, at the high school, we fund one principal, two assistant principals, and the dean of students. With an assistant principal retiring in June, it's a timely opportunity to consolidate the admin supervisory ranks and save money with no impact on teaching. This one elimination of a managerial admin position would produce an ongoing cost savings of roughly $175,000 to $180,000. That's a salary assumption of approximately $150,000 and benefits, et cetera, burden of $25,000 or $30,000. Now, this one move alone would lower the superintendent's projected budget increase from over 3% to 2.75%. from over 3% to 2.75%. And that would give us a good running start on getting to the 2.5% objective. In fact, I would be disappointed, the team, if we couldn't find an additional quarter of a percent decrease in a $67 million budget. So I look forward to your careful review and creative inputs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll close the hearing at 7:51. And thank you all for coming, and thank you, and we'll see you Board of Ed tomorrow. Thanks.
(inaudible).
Next, we'll have, the presentation is postponed. New items.
Madam Chair, I moved a motion to be added to the agenda, item N-5, to set a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Okay. At this time, I'd ask for any other public comment on any topic that you'd like, and please come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We do have a communications from Stephen Kay, which supports the Farmington High School project, which we'll make sure is in the record for today. The reading of the minutes?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the February 12, 2019, regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
Madam Chair, I move to approve February 26, 2019, regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Okay, and here we have the letter in our packet of the reading of communications by Stephen Kay, which will be, as I said, in the minutes. Report of the committees. Yukon, no meeting right now. Land acquisition.
Land Acquisition Committee met today. We're continuing to look at potential new acquisitions, and we did add one new property to our land acquisition list.
Okay, thank you. Green Efforts.
Green Efforts met last week. We had a presentation from a member of the West Hartford, I think it's the Energy Commission, about efforts that West Hartford is taking in order to improve their renewable energy focus and energy efficiency. We're hoping to maybe collaborate at some point in the future as a way to share strategies. Green Efforts is continuing to discuss its waste reduction strategies around town and ways to promote that. And the cleanup is, as a reminder, scheduled for April 27th and Saturday, all day, if you were looking for teams, businesses, any individuals who want to help out. And if you're not available on the 27th, you can clean up anytime during that week and make an appointment, and we can even weigh your waste. There's a contest for the heaviest haul with gift cards from many of our local restaurants. Our next meeting is April 2nd at 6:30.
Thank you. Farmington Village Center Committee.
Madam Chair, we met, today is Tuesday. Yeah, we met last week with the BSC group. They went through a review of several different stakeholder meetings within the Farmington Village Center, and to gather some information from that committee to prepare for the community event that we're going to be hosting. And I believe it's, Kathy, help me with that, I think it's March 20th, is it the 19th or the 20th?
Let me see. I think it's further down in the calendar. March, was it?
21st.
21st, yeah.
And that, yeah, and that will be at the community center, so I encourage all residents who are interested in some of the discussion of the BSC group to attend.
And is it 7:00, I'm assuming, 7:00?
It's at 7:00.
Thank you. Auditor Ad-Hoc Committee.
We met today. We interviewed two firms, and we will be making a recommendation at our next meeting to the full council.
To the full, okay. Thank you. Reported the council chair. No report, just to make sure that everyone notices the meeting dates that were left on the, on our board for the next month and a half, next two months concerning budget. And hopefully, we'll see a lot of people out during that time. Board of Education Liaison.
Yes, Madam Chair. There was no regular full meeting since we last met. However, the Board of Ed did appoint the current IAR principal, Scott Hurwitz, as the new principal of Farmington High School. That'll be effective July 1, as Dr. Silva leaves. And then, so the current assistant principal, Nilda Irazari, at IAR, was appointed as the new IAR principal.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
They will be meeting tomorrow evening. So no report.
Okay. EDC, Economic Development.
Nothing to report.
Farmington Historical Society, or Division, District.
Yeah, Madam Chair, there was a joint meeting for both Farmington and Unionville Historic District to kind of go through some of the programs that are available with the state of Connecticut on restoring some of these historic homes and grants that are available for some of those homeowners. It was very, we had quite a few people in here, and I was kind of impressed the turnout, and I think it was very educational for some of the residents who have been maintaining their historic homes and knowing that there, potentially, there is some help for some of those residents if they want to apply for those funds that may be available. So that's all I have to report.
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority meets next April 10th at 6:00 PM at Maple Village in Unionville for their annual meeting.
Human Relations Commission.
And Human Relations Commission meets next on March 27th at 6:30 PM, and that's at the community center.
Library Board.
The Library Board met on February 19th. The Library Board decided to postpone the Challenge Cup Golf Event. I think with Jay leaving and a lot of other things, they just needed, wanted more time to plan for it, so they're talking about possibly doing it next year. And the Maker Fair will be held at the Farmington Library at the end of this month, on March 31st, from 12 to 4.
Okay, thank you. TPZ?
Nothing new to report.
And Unionville Historic? I think that's...
Yes. Yeah, so as Bruce said, we had the joint educational seminar on historic homes, and Bruce talked about that, but just to add, in terms of the number of people that showed up, Alyssa from the Connecticut State Office of Historic Preservation said that our town had the most people show up to this seminar of any of the town she's visited, so I was very proud of that.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. UVIA?
Nothing to report.
Water Pollution Control Authority.
At the last meeting, I believe my report included some issues regarding some of the pumps with the construction project. I'm pleased to say, since the last meeting, they've been resolved for the most part. Construction is still going well. They're going to continue to monitor them, but for the most part, I'm getting good reports on the new pumps.
Great. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Reported the Town Manager, Kathy.
You just have a short report in your places, and it's talking about having a, our March meeting to talk about the high school building project. That's, let me see, hold on one sec. Yeah, so we were talking with Nancy and Bruce, we thought the topic of the March 26, 2019 Town Council meeting would be the discussion of the next steps for the Farmington High School facility. So we're going to have a busy month. We usually cancel that one, but we thought that was a good opportunity. We could just do the high school right then and there and talk about that. So that would be a normal time, 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
So if it was off your schedule, put it back on.
What was the date again?
It's a March 26th. It's the usual council meeting, but a lot of times, we cancel it because we've just come out of the budget, but we decided we'd hold it because we do have a topic.
So I need a motion to accept the Town Manager's report?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Okay, appointments.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Agenda Item L1, I move that Swampadaz be appointed to the Building Code Board of Appeals for a balance of five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2021.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
Item L4, I move that Charles Bucardi be appointed to the Tourism Central Regional District for a balance of a three-year term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th of 2020. I'm sorry if I screwed up his name, but...
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
Madam Chair, Agenda Item L6, I move that Swampadaz be appointed to the Justice of Peace for a balance of four-year term, beginning immediately and ending June, January 4, 2021.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
Item L8, I move that Laura Gro be appointed to the Greater Hartford Transit District for a balance of four years' term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th of 2022. The term includes, that's a correction in the agenda, but that's what it is.
It's 2022?
2020.
2023?
Yeah, 2022, that's a correction on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
Item L9, I move that Peter Delphin be appointed to the Connecticut Forest and Park Association Net Trails Stewardship Council, beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Old Business, none? New Business, and one?
I move to set the public hearing on Monday, April 1, 2019, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall, Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Council proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Second.
Any questions?
And just to note, just remember, that is a Monday night, based on our charter requirements.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? And two?
I move to accept the annual report.
Second.
Questions? I just want to say thank you. It's a great report, and I just, it's really amazing, the information that's in there, and it just makes you so proud to read about all the things we do in town. So it's a great report, and any of you out there in the public that haven't seen it should absolutely take a look. It's a wonderful report. So, thank you, Kathy. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? And three?
I move to appoint members of the Farmington Historic District and Property Commission as a Historic District and Property Study Committee.
Second.
So, you saw the attachment asking for that, and it's the Farmington Historic District and Property Commission has a request that the Town Council appoint their body as the Historic Districts and Property Study Committee for the purpose of creating new historic districts, expanding existing historic districts, and/or designating new historic properties within Farmington, pursuant to the state statute. Once these additional properties have been identified and nominated for designation, the list will be submitted for endorsement and approval by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Town Council. In addition, property owners are given the opportunity to vote inclusion within the historic district. And this is in Farmington, and as you remember, a couple of agendas ago, I've lost track, but Unionville had done the same thing, so it's the same, similar process.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? And four?
I move to approve the following property tax refund totaling $50,765.73.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? And five?
And five. I move to set a public hearing on April 1, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to discuss the fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and to solicit citizens' input.
Second.
It's my understanding through Nancy Parent that there is another community block grant that has opened up, and that the idea would be that we're going to be working with New Horizons on the second small cities grant to complete their real rehabilitation project.
Any questions?
Do you intend to do this public hearing first?
Yeah, I put this at 7:00 to do it, and then the other one was 7:05, because this will be really quick.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Before we have a motion for executive session, I just wanted to say congratulations to our Town Manager for her getting married, her marriage ceremony, and a week ago. And congratulations, and we're all very happy for you, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much.[1747.46][1747.46](applause). After 19 years.
After 19 years.[1753.15][1753.15](laughing). Okay, could I have a motion for executive session?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh.
I think I need, yeah. I need to clarify that, sorry. I move to executive session concerning the sales of acquisition of real estate property, and tenants of this executive session shall be limited to members of the Town Council and the Town Manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Okay, thank you.